Good afternoon. It is March 26, 2025. Before we convene the formal city council meeting, we will have a meeting of the city's assisted housing governing board. I'll call that board to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Board member Galindo Olvidar?
Here.
Board member Guardado?
Here.
Board member Hodge Washington?
Here.
Board member Maggard? Board member Pastor? Board member Stark?
Here.
Board member Waring?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Brien?
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego?
Here. Item three is the meeting minutes. Vice Chair, do you have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Item four is a resolution. Vice Chair, do you have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Maggard? Pastor? Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item five is Resolution 226 required by the federal government. Vice Mayor, Vice Chair, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution, Chair. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We will adjourn the assisted housing governing board. I'll invite Fire Chaplain Troy Holthorff forward to deliver an invocation for the formal city council meeting.
Would you all please pray for me, pray with me. Father, we rejoice in you always. May your graciousness be known to everyone. And I pray these words over my brothers and sisters with me today. May we think about and live out whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is commendable. May we dwell on that which is morally excellent and worthy of praise. Help us, Lord. Help us to be these kinds of people, your people, as we carry out today's meeting. Help us to do only what we have learned and received and heard and have seen in you. We know our peace will soon follow, so we rejoice. Thank you, Father. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to...
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll now call to order the formal meeting. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilman Galindo Olvidar?
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado?
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here. We have a great team with us to provide interpretation service. Mario, would you introduce your team?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as an interpreter, also with El Siduarte, who will be helping us as well. I'm going to introduce ourselves now to our Spanish-speaking audience and review a little bit of guidelines with our Spanish speakers. Muy buenas tardes. Me llamo Mario Barajas junto con mi colega El Siduarte. Estaremos sirviéndoles como intérpretes para el día de hoy. Quisiera recordarles que como un formato nuevo de interpretación, se les avisa de que si es que van a dar un comentario público, pueden hablar completamente si la necesidad de hacer pausas. Después de que usted dé su comentario sin interrupciones, entonces yo le voy a estar interpretando. Así, de esa manera, los miembros del consejo y del público podrán escuchar lo que usted dijo. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Will the city clerk read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G-7343 and 7370, S-51726 through 51777, and Resolutions 22283 through 22286.
I'll turn to the city attorney to explain the role of public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. Additionally, any member of the public who appears before council in their capacity as a lobbyist must, as required by Phoenix City Code, disclose this fact before addressing council. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Today is a special day, one of our own, is celebrating a birthday. Happy birthday to Councilwoman Guardado. Everyone has to be on their best behavior today. Yes, we hope it's a happy celebration. We'll begin with the meeting minutes. Councilman Robinson, do you have a motion on item one?
Mayor, yes, thank you. I move approval of item number one, the formal meeting minutes from November 13, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Councilwoman Hodge Washington, do you have a motion on item two?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve item number two, the November 20, 2024 formal meeting minutes.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor? Councilman Galindo Olvidar?
Mayor, may I have a point of personal privilege and request that we do a minute of silence in honor of the late Congressman Raúl Grijalva?
Thank you. That is a beautiful idea. Please join me and the council in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you for that important recognition of the late Congressman. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item three?
Mayor, I move to approve item three, the meeting minutes for December 4, 2024.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We have an all-star group here today for boards and commissions, which is our next item, item four. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Mayor, may I have a point of personal privilege?
Please.
Mayor, I'd like to welcome the children of a couple of the folks who will be sworn in today, and that they are Violet and Charlotte and Zilla and Paris, who are here to support their parents, who will be sworn into the Village Planning Commission. So, thank you for joining us, kids. You can never start too early learning about your local government. Mayor, I move to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. We will now ask our newly sworn in, our new commissioners to be, come forward to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies?
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of?
Discharge the duties of the office of.
State your office.
State my office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations and thank you for your service to the city of Phoenix. If you'll go behind, the council wishes to congratulate you. Congratulations to our new and returning commissioners. Thank you so much for your service to our city. We next go to the liquor license portion of the agenda. The city of Phoenix serves an advisory role for the state of Arizona. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
I move to approve items five through 12, noting that item seven is withdrawn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
I move to approve items 13 through 81, except the following: Items 18, 37, 38, 48, 50, 56, 60, 66, and 67, noting that items 52 and 81 are withdrawn and excluding the following additional items for virtual public comment: 64, 66, and 69. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, also excluding item 30. Also excluding item 30.
Thank you so much. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Next up is 18, a payment ordinance item for Brycon Corporation. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve item 18, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor?
Councilman Waring, go ahead.
Well, thank you. So, the staff, this seems a little expensive for what it is. They gave me some information on why that is. If they just explain that information and let's see if that, the explanation is satisfying to anyone concerned.
Thank you. We will welcome our deputy city manager Gina Montez.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Councilman Waring. As you know, we had our ribbon cutting on this particular facility this morning. A complicated project. I'm going to have, we have Eric Fruberg and Rachel Milley here. I'm going to have Rachel talk about some of the details of that project.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So, this was our new shelter at 71, 71st Avenue in Banbury, where we will now be sheltering up to 280 individuals per night at this site. This change order was to complete the site, complete the project, build out what was a very complicated project. And some of the final, final pieces of the project included installing all of the shade structures, completing the sprung structure. And then also, as you all know, we had a temporary tent on the site from July until just recently. That tent has now been removed. People are in the sprung structures. But Brycon needs to ready that site for the two additional X-wings and the additional restrooms that will be coming to the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, to ask.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. So, I know two things. Number one is I know how expensive tents are. Anyone who's gotten married outside knows how expensive tents are. So, I can only imagine. And that was, you weren't sure before, but that was built into the eight and a half million, correct? I think that's what you just said.
I apologize. Mayor, Councilman Waring, could you restate the question? We couldn't quite hear.
Sir, so the tent, I apologize, it's probably my croaky voice, sorry. You had a tent there for a period of time. That's built into the eight and a half million. You weren't sure when I asked you before whether that was included in this cost or not. It sounds like from what Rachel just said, it was included.
Yes, Councilman Waring, that is correct. The vision tent is included in this eight million dollars, correct? And you're right, earlier today, I did not know. Yes.
Yes, you didn't know before. Second, I've dealt with enough developers who want to build in floodplains, what that can do to a project's cost. So, I don't, I might have missed it, messed up the ears, but I don't remember you mentioning that. But that probably added to the cost substantially. So, it wasn't just like the normal structure. You had to do some stuff at the foundation level, plus you had to pay for the tents. And that's all encapsured in the eight and a half million. Thanks.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Waring, that is correct. To, in order to have space for people at the beginning of last summer, we had the temporary vision tent and all of the costs associated with that added to the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is whether or not we anticipate this is our last major investment at the site or do we anticipate additional expenditures for the 75th, sorry, 71st Navigation Center?
Mayor, members of the council, this is the final payment for this. This wraps up our project at that site.
Thank you for that information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone want to provide an update from this morning? Councilman Galindo Olvidar?
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. So, this morning, we did our grand opening and we, this site is a referral site. It is not a walk-up site. And it is one that will provide overnight shelter for 280 persons. There is a women's section, a men's section, and a partners' section. And with the use of the containers that are internet-ready and have all these great features to it. But the most important part of it is it offers individuals an opportunity for a second chance, not only to get sheltered, but also to get wraparound services like mental health and the dignity of a job, to go into a second chance of having a home. And the staff have done a phenomenal job of putting this project together since July 17, when the tent first opened. And now we've moved to the different structures. And as a councilman for District 7, where this resides, I'm really proud of the work that's gone into it and the lives that we will change for the better. And so, I just wanted to offer that today for the council.
Thank you. Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 30 is related to the, changes to pay. Do we have a motion?
I apologize. I move to approve item 30.
Second.
We have one comment. Scott Kirk, please come on down.
Hello, councilmembers. Came and spoke with you last month, and you guys encouraged HR to come speak with us for transparency on these matters. And I thank you because they did come speak with us. I'm here again because obviously there were some unsatisfactory things that came out of that, so we will continue our efforts. They did openly say that they made mistakes in this matter and didn't say they had any interest in fixing that anytime soon. But I would like to thank Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Bendrick for coordinating meetings with us to allow our voices to be heard so that hopefully we can come up with long-term solutions to reestablish equity and cultural competency in the pay structure here at the city of Phoenix for the long term. Thank you for allowing me to speak today and thank you for honoring your commitments.
Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. And after this next item, I might suggest to my colleagues that we take item 66, Wallace and Ladmo ceremonial street name, out of order. So, if everyone could consider whether that makes sense. But we'll stick with 37 now, which is an important one. Authorization to sponsor City of Phoenix Fast Track Cities HIV/AIDS Community Outreach Event. This is a very important initiative led by Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Pastor. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item 37, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Turn to Councilwoman Pastor for comments.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for understanding the importance of Fast Track Cities. I chair it with Councilwoman Stark, and we have been moving the needle and moving it forward. What I do want to say is it took us a little bit in our committee to realize that to do some of the outreach, we would need some dollars. So, I want to thank my colleagues for putting that as a priority in our budget of $250,000 to do the outreach that we have been doing throughout Phoenix. Some of the outreach has been to Can Community Health, Phoenix Pride, Aunt Rita's Foundation, Affirm, Southwest Center for HIV, Valley Wise Health, Lookout Publications, Maricopa Community College, Hope Makers Outreach, UMC Strength, One Community, Southwest Center, One in 10, Aunt Rita's Found, oh, I said that, and Ripple and Spectrum Medical. Those are some of the community impacts that we have made with these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. I got to join Councilwoman Stark this weekend. AIDS Walk: Return to the City of Phoenix. And our team was very involved in making that a successful event. We continue to provide really important educational information at a time where some of it is becoming less available, as well as supporting therapies and education. And if people have not seen the mural going up in downtown, highly recommend that. So, Councilwoman Stark, thank you for your leadership this weekend and generally as well. Any additional comments? Councilman Galindo Olvidar?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank both Councilwoman Laura Pastor and Deborah Stark for their leadership on this important effort. HIV, HIV and AIDS prevention is still an important matter, and it should be taken seriously. Both of them do that. And I know that Councilwoman Pastor mentioned some of the organizations impacted and affected with the outreach. Many of them are in District 7, so I very much appreciate this ongoing effort and their leadership to ensure that this issue does not fade away and that it's front and center. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. And unfortunately, the last year available, we saw a 20% increase in diagnoses in our community. So, our work is not done, but thanks to great science and clinical partners, there's such effective treatment available. And the city and the two councilwomen have gotten international recognition for this effort. So, glad that while some branches of government are going in a different direction, we are going in the direction of public health. Roll call.
Galindo Olvidar?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to suspend the rules to take item 66 out of order?
Yes, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules to take item 66 out of order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
All right. Item 66, Wallace and Ladmo Way ceremonial street name signage. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll turn to the city clerk.
Item 60, oh, sorry. Oh, I apologize, Mayor. I thought.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
Mayor?
I move to approve.
I yield to my colleague in District 3.
How about a second, Councilman?
I'll do the second.
Wonderful. I think we have several councilmembers who want to speak on this item, but given who we have here today, shall we begin with council requests or? I guess a little background might be appropriate. I'll turn to Councilman Galindo Olvidar and then Councilwoman Stark to introduce this item.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and yield to my colleague.
Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very excited about this item. Julia Taggart is probably sitting out in the audience.
Confirmed.
And she certainly popped this to my attention. As a matter of fact, last year, there was a wonderful exhibit about Wallace and Ladmo at the Sunny Soap Historical Society. I was schooled in why they were so important to Sunny Soap. Wallace lived in Sunny Soap for a while, and Ladmo sponsored many Sunny Soap High School graduating parties at Legend City. And I know Julia posted to me and said, "We really need to do something." And she's right. My sister-in-law is the most excited person about this item because she still has her Wallace and Ladmo bag. So, I am very excited. I am happy to support this, and I will turn it over to the councilmen in District 7.
Mayor, is it okay? Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. I'm so happy to be the councilman for District 7 that will be the host for this ceremonial signing. I grew up in rural Arizona, and so Wallace and Ladmo was a completely new item for me when I moved to the city. But I understand its cultural relevance and how many people get so much joy. But I understand its cultural relevance and how many people get so much joy from the work that they did, and especially the Ladmo bag. Everybody talks about the Ladmo bag. And so, Mayor, this is going to be a great addition to the downtown. There is a great following, and I believe that it'll be a great landmark for the city. So with that, I move to approve the item.
Second.
We got double motions.
Oh, my God, I forgot. Sorry. See, now you didn't just come to a meeting, you came to a show.
The council's great enthusiasm for this. Now, I am so pleased that we have Pat McMahon with us. He will be our next speaker. If you could... Turn to Pat, followed by Julia.
This is such a special experience because you can get trophies in this business that we're in, and you get Emmys and all kinds of recognition, most particularly the laughter of the kids in the audience and the recognition even all these years later. But this acknowledgement is so special for all of us, cast members, the people that were directly involved with the show and the production, and friends of those people who have gathered here today. Wallace's son, David, Ladmo's son, Robin, could not be here, well, because they have jobs. And they just wanted to acknowledge the fact that this is one of the most special kinds of recognition that the show has ever gotten, even in 36 years here at Channel 5. I will tell you, this acknowledgement, for me personally, one of the most important things today to me is that you invited kids, not only because of the fact that without them, there would have been no show, but also because I deeply appreciate having somebody in the audience my size. When you talk about the Wallace and Ladmo Show, you talk about Phoenix because while New York had us for a little while, and they wrote to us and said, "You know what? Gerald is just too rotten. Can you make him a little nicer?" We said, "No." They said goodbye. Los Angeles, we were on for a while. They said, "Could you make Captain Super a little less political?" We said, "No." They said goodbye. And we're saying now to all of you, it's the best thing we ever did. Thank you so very much from Wallace and Ladmo and the man who pushes that button and says,
Pat, incredible testimony from an incredible icon in our community. Julia, I am so sorry you have to follow that, but we wouldn't be here today without your leadership. And Randy, you will follow Julia.
Yes, no, thank you. The meaning for this street sign going there is when you go down First Avenue, you will see the Wallace and Ladmo mural. So you'll see Gerald, you'll see Wallace, you'll see Ladmo, and then you'll see Wallace and Ladmo Way. So it's kind of putting everything together, and that was where it was filmed, in the old KPHO studio building. The show has such a significance to Arizona. People love the show. It's their childhood. My dad loved the show. He's still upset he never got a Ladmo bag. So, no, I'm very glad that we have the entire cast here to celebrate with us and for you guys to share your memories about the show. It's been off for 36 years, but people still remember it to this day. They love it so much. I mean, they want a Ladmo bag or they want a Ladmo tie. And I'm just, I'm so thankful for everything that they have done for the community. They fundraised over millions of dollars back in the day. I mean, they really were for, you know, Phoenix and Arizona helping children, you know, being a part of the community. It's just, it's an amazing thing to see and to have the street sign go up to honor them. I think it's a beautiful thing. So thank you, guys.
Randy will be next, followed by Rita.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Randy Murray. My wife Teresa and I own First Studio, which was the building that Wallace and Ladmo was born in, the show. We're very fortunate to have the building and to be the caretakers of such a historic building. And we're thrilled that there's going to be a Wallace and Ladmo Way just to the north. That's great. But I want to take the opportunity to say, I am a filmmaker and have had the good fortune of having a great career and really love what I do. And that is because I watched Wallace and Ladmo as a child. I saw them on TV, and I said, "If those guys in those costumes can make a TV show, I can make a TV show." And I'm so grateful, and I'm grateful for the city for doing this. Thank you.
Rita is next, followed by Dan.
Hi, my name is Rita Davenport. Honored to be here to recognize friends of mine that made such a difference in not only our world, our community, but when I look back at the times that we had together, I remember one time that Ladmo and his wife and our families went down to Mexico, and we said, "Ladmo, nobody knows you're here, so you can just relax and have a good time." We're out on the beach, and Ladmo's running, and these kids lined up, "Ladmo!" And they were chasing him all down the beach. So he couldn't get away from the notoriety and the prestige and the respect that everybody had for him. But, you know, the Wallace and Ladmo Show was not only for kids, it was for adults too, as many adults watched it as kids. And there are still people in counseling right now that did not get a Wallace and Ladmo bag. It's really sad. I mean, I feel sorry for them. But the difference that they made in our community and the things that Wallace could bring out to talk about to get people laughing and make such a difference. So I am grateful to have spent time... My studio was right next to theirs, so I got to listen and laugh. And, you know, laughter is therapeutic. And what they did for our city to make people laugh, just mentioning their names made people laugh. So we are so grateful, and I'm so thrilled that there's going to be this recognition of a street sign with their name on it. I asked Pat if we could do also a street with Gerald on it next time, so we'll work on that next time, Pat. But it is just amazing what you're doing. So my congratulations, and I'm just humbled to have been exposed to this kind of talent for so many years. It raised the expectation of all of us. So thank you for doing this, and God bless you. Love you.
Thank you. Dan Horn is next, followed by Gina Thomas.
I'm not sure this is needed, but I thought a little background on the show might be helpful. So just sit right back, and you'll hear a tale, a tale of a TV show that started in 1954 on 5 KPHO. A fellow by the name of Bill, a witty lad indeed, conceived a new identity for laughs named Wallace Sneed. A TV station hired him just to get him off their backs. His pestering had worn them down. They could bear no more attacks. Now, this prospector guy with the program there, Ken Kennedy was his name, made Bill part of his Gold Dust Charlie show, and Wallace rose to fame. Soon, the station wanted him to host his own show on the air. The folks in Phoenix tuned their TV sets to its Wallace broadcast there. He started strong, doing all he could, but solo gags ran dry. He knew to keep the show afloat, he'd need another guy. Next thing you know, this cameraman was drafted for a skit. He did so well, there was little doubt that Ladmo would be it. We'll jump ahead in the story now, a decade more or less. The boys were doing really swell. Their show a big success. When Wallace had this sketch idea that needed more support, to pull it off required three, and they were one guy short. Just then, Pat, the brand-new weatherman from the new set studio strayed, while enlisted him to play the part, and history was made. It's ages now since the show went off, so why such reverence today? For the joy ride, they chauffeured over 35 years down Wallace and Ladmo Way.
Incredible. Gina Thomas was actually for item 69. I apologize. Ben Tyler, you are next. Ben? Can you hear us? Ben? We'll try one... Okay. One second. Okay.
I...
Now we can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, great. So I'm up next?
You are. You have a tough act to follow.
Okay. I need to warn you, is it going to be a problem if my camera's not working? I mean, can they at least hear me?
We can hear you but not see you.
Okay, good. I'm all set.
All right. We are looking forward to your testimony.
I'm sorry?
You are... It is your turn to speak. We are looking forward to your testimony.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Okay. So Ben, if you wanted to start talking now, it's your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ben Tyler, and I have a bit of a history with Wallace and Ladmo Show. When I was eight years old, I got my card pulled out of the barrel. This was 1964. There were no Ladmo bags. You got to choose a toy from Ray Bradbury's Toy Cottage. Later in life, I actually was hired to write and do some minor characters on the show. I couldn't believe it. And then around 1999, I wrote a play called, believe it or not, The Wallace and Ladmo Show. It is weird for the fourth-largest city in the United States to have a kid's TV show as part of its legacy, but that's certainly what we have here. And I would like to take this time to personally thank the City of Phoenix for not leveling the old KPHO building as they are wont to do. I guess it's not a beautiful enough building, but that mural sure helps a lot. So, yeah, this is Phoenix history. I was born and raised here. Wallace and Ladmo had a lifelong impact on me. I'm delighted you're putting up the sign, the street sign. I know there are many people here who are wondering what the heck is Wallace and Ladmo, but us, the old-timers, we fill them in, and it's kind of a shame, I guess, that they missed it. That's all I have to say, and I'm just delighted that you are doing this. And that is it.
Thank you all for that important testimony. We are so lucky to have so many incredible icons with us here to testify, and thank you for all who have made such a difference in so many people's lives. One of the great things the city can do to recognize that is to name a street in honor of an important event, person, or show, and we are excited to move this item forward. I think many of the councilmembers also have comments. Do we have additional comments? All right. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I started off Satan I would, you know, excited to support, but I think I may need to start a recovery group for those of us who have not been gifted a Ladmo bag. But while I hadn't had the pleasure of having this show as a part of my childhood, however, I have seen the profound impact it has had on generations of Arizonans. It has brought joy, laughter, and a deep sense of community. What touched me beyond the entertainment was Wallace and Ladmo gave back in meaningful ways, raising funds for local charities, supporting pet adoptions, and even helping the Phoenix Children's Hospital acquire lifesaving equipment. This recognition is a well-deserved tribute to a show that had such a lasting legacy. It helped shape the childhood of so many in our cities, one Ladmo bag at a time, and I am pleasure... It's my pleasure to support the installation of this ceremonial street sign, honoring
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Glenda Alvera, for bringing this forward. What an honor for such a great show. And I am old enough to have grown up with Wallace and Ladmo, and I did not get a Ladmo bag, so maybe I could be part of the support group there. However, my father went to the fire academy, and as part of his fire academy, he went with Ladmo's son, Robin. And when graduation came, while it was really exciting to have Dad graduate, Ladmo was still the star of the graduation. So I have very fond memories of meeting Ladmo and his son, but again, it was all about Ladmo even on that day. So thank you for all the laughs and wonderful giving that you did for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Glenda Alvera.
So I know that many of you are in recovery or in need of a group. I will share with you all that we will have Ladmo bags available at the event. There will be a limited number that will be sponsored by District 7, so I cannot guarantee that everyone will get one, so there may still be a need for those who need the group sessions, but we will definitely have some there. So to my colleagues, I will have one for you. To the community, first come, first served.
I'll make sure to get there early.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I think this began when Julia Taggart, President of the Sunny Slope Historical Society, brought this to Councilwoman Stark. So thank you. It was a great idea, Julia. Rule call.
Galinda Vida.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Sorry, Waring.
Oh, yes. You didn't hear me? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Pass is 9-0.
By unanimous vote, the Phoenix City Council has adopted Wallace and Ladmo Way ceremonial street signs. Look forward to joining you to unveil those street signs. Thank you so much. We will now return. I think, do you want to give a pause for a moment in case anyone wants to get a chance to leave, although you're welcome to stay for our entire council meeting, but... Yeah. We are so lucky to have had the Wallace and Ladmo family join us here today for this important vote, and we will get to see them very soon. And thank you again to Pat McMahon for being with us here today. They may regret leaving because next up, we have authorization to amend ground lease agreement with the Christ Town LLC to modify the term and expand the premises. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item 38.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn to Councilwoman Pastor for comments.
Yes, I don't know if staff's here, but I have some comments. And I guess my question is really, I didn't realize we were leasing that property. I thought we owned that property. And so I have several questions as to, and I think I know the answer, but I want to put it on the record for the future of possibly purchasing that property. Since we're doing all the upgrades, we're expanding, and I understand that it's a part of the Christ Town and it's an asset to them, but that property is also an asset to us, and I feel like we should own that. I guess my question is, why haven't we purchased the property, or why haven't we thought about purchasing the property? Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, the reason why is because the landlord is not interested in selling the property and has not been interested. The lease started in 1960, and throughout this time, they have not been interested in selling.
So is there a possibility in the future to possibly relocate the Yucca Library? Because this is a...
Because this is a long, I think, a 25-year lease, 50-year lease? And I'm curious to know that if that's possible. We have land on 19th Avenue and Montebello that we could possibly build a library around.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely. I mean, that would be the city's decision if they would like to relocate and buy another property and build another, you know, the library somewhere else. That is something that can be done. I'll turn it over.
Yes, that's definitely something that can be done. That library is a strong part of the community there. And so we are looking to continue our partnership in leasing that land where the community uses that library now, but looking to the future, that's definitely an option to consider.
Well, I guess because we're signing a 50-year lease, that's where I'm asking these questions, because when we sign a 50-years lease, what would be the cost to break the lease?
Yes, the city can negotiate, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, the city can negotiate the terms of the lease and can come back and negotiate with the landlord.
Okay, so...
Do you want to continue this item for...
Yeah, I would like to continue this item. When, okay, when does the lease expire?
This new request, it's a 50-year lease.
I can't hear you.
Speak closer to the microphone, we can't hear you.
Thank you. It expires in 57, 2057.
No, 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 current, the current lease, the lease right now?
Correct. The current, Councilwoman Pastor, Mayor, members of council, the current lease expires in 2057. We renegotiated the terms of the lease to allow for the expansion of Yucca Library, which is a go-bond initiative, so we needed additional land to expand that library. So the lease was renegotiated to include that additional land to build on.
Okay. Can we just continue it so I can just then ask these questions?
For how long?
When's our next meeting?
April 9.
Okay.
Continued April 9?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think we'll, I mean, I think I'll have the answers.
Mayor, I move to continue the item till April 9.
Second. We have motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We will be back on April 9. We next go to item 48, acquisition of property in the Rio Reimagined area. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 48.
Second. Councilman Glenda Olvera.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make some comments. This parcel lies within the Rio Reimagined corridor, a bold regional effort to revitalize 45 miles of the Salt River with sustainable public areas and economic opportunity. Rio Reimagined was conceived at ASU in the 1960s and was an effort led by Congressman Ed Pastor and Senator John McCain with the goal of revitalizing the riverbed through community activation. The city's acquisition of this property would position this site as a catalytic anchor for investment and ecological restoration aligned with Phoenix's long-term growth. Securing the property now protects against speculative or incompatible development that would undermine equitable and strategic revitalization. The vision of this project was supported by the Phoenix City Council and the residents through the 2023 bond question, and today, we are here to deliver. South Phoenix has borne the burden of environmental injustices like gravel pits and landfills. This site offers an opportunity to reverse that trend. Located near the South Central Light Extension, Light Rail Extension, the parcel is well-suited for mixed use or civic uses that maximize access to transit. Development here can serve as a model for sustainable, inclusive urban planning. With this action, Chris Mackey becomes the first director to spend all of the bond funding allocated for this project, and I hear this is a point of pride for her and the department in supporting the South Phoenix community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I don't know. We desert, yeah.
Did you want to speak?
Actually, this is very exciting, a personal pride due to the fact that Congressman Pastor happened to be my father, who I happen to look at him as my father and not as a congressman. But it's a personal pride for me because I know the labor of love that he placed into making this dream happen and making it the river bottom no longer a river bottom with tires, trash, and a dumping ground, and really built and had a vision to build what there is today, and others have a vision to continue it on. So it's a point of pride for me and my family at this moment.
Councilwoman Hotch-Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I also echo the sentiments of support and excitement for the acquisition of the land to further the Rio Reimagined project. As mentioned by my colleagues, it takes a step forward in rectifying some of the harms that we've seen in that community and turning the riverbed into an area where more individuals can partake and see the beauty that entails South Phoenix, so I'm excited to support this project.
Thank you. The next three months are an enormously important series of months for Rio Reimagined. The city of Phoenix would not exist without the riverfront area, and we are investing in it in big ways. You will see later today a vote on a construction contract to build a bridge for pedestrians and others across the riverfront to make it a great recreation spot, or for kids who want to walk to school or jobs in the area. We hope it will spur additional investment. The Economic Development Department will have control over this land, and we'll be able to move forward with the city's ambitious visions, which started long before any of us were elected, and include the Rio Salado Beyond the Banks area plan and the Del Rio area brownfields plan. So many of our residents have come together to envision this area. We have, with support from the federal government, gotten an important grant to develop a transit-oriented development plan. Our Planning and Development Department conducted an assessment of the Rio corridor to identify property, and this was one of the most important properties for redevelopment. Thank you to Enrique for leading that effort. We're really excited for this to move forward. It's my hope that this plot of land will become a catalytic investment, that private dollars will follow public dollars, and that will really have the kind of resources devoted to this corridor that it deserves as such an exciting place in our city. So I'm excited to support this item. Want to thank Councilwoman Hotch-Washington, who chaired the bond, which will help make this possible, as well as my colleagues who have each been dedicated to this area. There are few areas in the city that get citywide attention, and Rio has just been such a priority for this council, including our, and for our partners as well. ASU has been very focused on supporting us in this area, as well as a private sector nonprofit business leadership group that is trying to take Rio Salado to the next level. We're grateful to the federal support and Congressman Pastor, who is making this investment still possible. So a really exciting two votes today, and I look forward to supporting this item. Roll call.
Glenda Olvera.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hotch-Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Should have mentioned, I think when Councilwoman Waring was working for John McCain, they talked about how to bring this forward. So big, big progress on a lot of visionary ideas at today's council meeting. We next go to item 50, Phoenix Business and Workforce Development Board Certification. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 50.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I have some comments. This is actually, this is a really great program that we have in our city, and it's a workforce program. It is creative, cutting-edge, and innovative with the mobile unit, career unit, youth summer employment. We were the first in the country to have an apprenticeship training program for semiconductor technicians. We are already looking at opportunities for training in AI and is ingraining it into the business. We have a broad partnership that includes 400-plus training providers, including Maricopa Community College System. And our workforce board is led by business, so the advice offered to the city council is timely and what business is needed in today's world. So I am happy and glad that we are putting our paperwork in to get our board certification so we can continue on and doing the great work that we are doing within the city.
Thank you. Well said, and thank you to those who have served on the board, including our current chair, Sam Wolo, who is an expert in medical devices, as well as we've had great representation from several labor organizations, including CWA. Roll call.
Glenda Olvera.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hotch-Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
And earlier today in the omnibus vote, we had an important vote on the summer youth program, so coming up soon and a great opportunity for our young people. We'll next go to item 56, customer engagement software contract, and I'll turn to Councilwoman Robinson for the motion.
Mayor, thank you very much. I move to approve item number 56, but I'd like to say a couple of words, if I could, please.
Perfect, we have a second. We'll recognize you for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular software engagement item is something we presented or was, had presented in a Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee. It gives us yet another opportunity, and I use that word opportunity on purpose, it gives us another opportunity to allow the police department, in this case, even though we've used this engagement program throughout the city, this is specifically for the police department. It gives us yet another opportunity to allow the police department to ensure or to, you know, to better itself, to understand what the community is concerned with or about, and it gives the police department that opportunity to hear from the public and then to respond accordingly. So I see this as yet another opportunity for accountability, another opportunity for enhanced professionalism, all the things that we would expect from our police department. I think this particular software will do just that. Mayor, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. I have some questions regarding this item. And my understanding is that we have Zen City now, and what we want to do is add Blockwise. Is that for the police department and the communications office? And I believe Zen City is with the communications office currently, or who uses Zen City?
Mayor, council members, Councilwoman Pastor, the communications office uses Zen City currently. We do, they do social media listing as well as a quarterly community survey. This product is specific to the police department. It continues the survey concept, but it is specific to policing.
Okay. That's where I was getting confused, because Zen City can't be used for the police department? What is the difference between Zen City and Blockwise?
Zen City is the overall product. Blockwise is a specific feature within the products that Zen City offers. So currently, within the community survey, we do ask a question about public safety, but it is one single question. This will allow us to have a survey that's ongoing that is specific to things related to the police department.
Okay, so then, okay, so I'm just going to explain it for the public, because it's a little confusing, and then we're adding additional dollars. So we have Zen City, which is our overarching software or survey piece. Then in that piece, there's a question in particular towards police or first responders, and it's just a question, and then from that question, I think Blockwise, if you could explain this to me, Blockwise then comes into play then to create or add additional questions or inquiries about the Zen City question.
Do you want to add more to that?
I hope I'm right.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Councilwoman Pastor, yes, that's correct. This tool is in addition to those features offered by Zen City that allows us to assess the impact in the organizational performance being executed by the Phoenix Police Department.
Okay. And then my question is, how do you, how will you use that data? Like it'll pull, I guess I'm going to ask, it'll pull, do you, this 43rd Avenue and, I'm going to use what, Thomas Safe Place or Safe Area, and then they, then they say yes or no. And then I'm assuming underneath there, there will be another question as to why don't you, why is it a no, and then there's another question. And then you'll aggregate that data, and what will you do with it?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, excellent question. There are standard components that are assessed utilizing the Blockware Software Program. Those four standard features, regardless of jurisdiction or location or city, are the consistent that allows us to assess performance, not only within our city, but in comparison to other communities of our size, nature, and makeup. Those four standard things include asking questions about safety, fairness, respect, and voice. It also allows us to customize questions specific to issues that face specific communities. Those questions can include, what is your number one issue or problem in your area? One of the great features that allows us to do is to also be able to understand within our broader community of the city of Phoenix, we have individual smaller communities with precincts and things like that, so it allows us to understand individually, even within our precincts, what the impact is. It's a really unique opportunity when we look at being able to assess the impact that the services we afford or provide to the community, what that impact is. It's very difficult to measure that, and this is one of the first ways that I'm aware of that allows us to understand what that impact is, and most importantly, allows us to identify those opportunities for improvement so that we can improve our performance and the positive impact that we're having within the community.
Okay, and then my last question. So it sounds like this platform provides this information, how then do you, how then do you place this information to create trust and relationships with the community? Because that's what was said in the packet.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor. We will utilize this information, just like we do with all of our metrics, and share them from a way for us to be able to improve, share it with council, with leadership, with our community. It's their voice, it's their feedback to us. We use that information to make good decisions and identify ways and approaches in which we can be more effective. I think it's important that that information isn't just ours, it's the community's information, and we're able to share that.
So I want to thank you for that, because we do need transparency in the sense of communities' voices being collected, gathering the data that is needed, and then being able to find different ways to become effective within our community and build the trust and the relationships that are needed within our, within our community and within our city. So I appreciate that, and I actually, Jody, I always appreciate working with you because you're a straight shooter, and I know you know your stuff. And so I want to thank you for that. But thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you. Roll call.
Glenda Olvera.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hotch-Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Next, we move on to an item related to Fiverr to Home. I'll ask the city clerk to read the title.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 60 is Ordnance G7343, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to amend the Phoenix City Code by adding a new Chapter 5D titled Network Infrastructure Services.
Mayor, I move to approve item 60.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. This is one of the items where we've gotten a lot of input over the last several months, and this one has evolved a fair amount, so we're going to begin with the presentation, and we're so thankful for everyone who's been part of our stakeholder process. We will have a much better policy when we're done because of all of this work. I'll introduce our deputy city manager, Ellen Stevenson.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
We made a motion, however, I have a motion, and I have some additional items to be added to the motion.
Okay, so we'll do, do you want to hear the presentation and then the motion?
Yeah.
All right, so as soon as the presentation's over, I'll go to Councilwoman Pastor for a substitute motion or friendly amendment, we'll decide when we get there.
Thank you.
Our lawyers will be ready to tell us which one it is.
Great.
Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As stated, this item will add a new chapter to the city code to allow for licensed providers to install fiber optic network internet service within the city's right-of-way. I have with me Eric Froberg, city engineer, and Kevin Sanotto, our right-of-way manager within the Street Transportation Department. City Code Chapter 5D just inserts a new framework within the city code to allow for licensing for fiber optic services. It's in the same city code where we have items that allow for cable television, utilities, and other infrastructure within the city's right-of-way. They're all done through license agreement. This just establishes specific language for fiber optic providers. Maybe asking, what is fiber optic services? And they're a communications network that transports high-speed data to and from end users, and in this case, the FCC defines that broadband service for high speed as more than 100 megabits per second download speed. The typical fiber-to-home services range from 500 megabits to 2 gigabytes. The existing access for this type of service within the Phoenix area is that 99% of the city is covered by meeting the FCC minimum 100-megabit service. That's covered by Cox, Lumen, CenturyLink within the city of Phoenix. If this proposed amendment goes forward, then the residents could have a choice for other internet service providers that would be able to come forward, enter into a license agreement with the city, and then they would be able to choose some different high-speed internet service providers. I would add that another interesting fact is that the Cox provides 96.5% coverage at 1 gigabyte speed, which is very high-speed internet service throughout the city as well. So we are well-covered in this area, but the proposal does allow for additional services should firms come forward and choose to do that. One of the existing license processes that this was modeled after is our Cox Cable Television License. They pay 5% of cable TV revenues only. There's no license fee for the telephone or internet, but those are provided in a bundle, as many people know. This does include their permanent inspection fees that are within that 5%, so we get deducted out of that 5% for what they have to pay for that. They do comply with the city's requirements for horizontal boring and trenching to install infrastructure in the public right-of-way, and they do comply with the pavement restoration code requirements as well. With that, I'm going to turn over to Eric Froberg, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ellen. Mayor, members of council, thankful to be here today to kind of go over some of the details of the proposed language. This first slide is focused on the fees that would be attributed to this code amendment or this code, this additional code language. The main one, because we really wanted to have parity with what Ellen just talked about, what Cox and some of the other utilities already pay to use our right-of-way. So the framework that we have here feel is pretty much in line with that. So we have two different versions. We have a 3% on direct gross revenue. Those are for firms that install, construct, and maintain the fiber in the right-of-way, but also serve as the internet service provider. There are firms that would fall under the second, the 6%, those are firms that would design or construct, maintain the fiber, but not serve as the internet service provider and be more of a wholesaler where other internet service providers would use their fiber. So these two options try to create some parity with that 5% that Ellen talked about. In an effort to protect the city while these programs are starting in their infancy and starting to go, we did institute an annual minimum fee of $6 per home passed. That fee would stay in effect until the 3% or 6% end up being the larger number, and then the smaller fee or the annual minimum fee would go away. As we went through this, starting back in tip and all the way up the tip presentation through in November, and then all the way up to now, we've had lots of interaction with stakeholders, and through those, we've kind of summarized the majority of the comments down to these four main topics were kind of the ones that kind of rose to the top. One being the clarification of the fee, why 3% versus 6%, how those work. There was some conversation about how fiber to the home in new developments, new subdivisions would be treated, that then had us, based on those conversations, we added some sections in there, we added a section in there that for new developments, as they are being developed, subdivisions are being developed, that when they're putting in all of their utilities, the water, sewer, gas, all of those types of things, that we would suspend the and not collect any of the right-of-way fees until the subdivision had built out to 51% in an effort to allow them some incentive to build in advance before the pavement was down and those types of things. The other two items were microtrenching. The city currently doesn't allow microtrenching in the right-of-way, but based on some conversations that we've had, we did offer some of these firms the opportunity to do a pilot, and one of them has taken us up on it, and that pilot will start in May. It's anticipated to start in May, which would give us the opportunity to view how microtrenching works and how it would impact our payment over the long term. I would also say that MAG has created a working group to look at microtrenching kind of in a global view from all agency perspective, so we're not doing it all individually, we're going to try to do it as a group. Kevin and a few others that are in the Streets Department are a part of that working group. So we think we'll be able to explore microtrenching a little more as we move forward. And then the last one that there was some conversation about was the pavement restoration policy. And we do know that Mayor and council have been especially protective of our payment and has advanced over $200 million as part of, from the T 2050 money to do the accelerated pavement maintenance program. So right now, any utility, not fiber to the home, but any utilities that go into our right-of-way have to comply with the payment restoration policy. Additionally, we had lots of conversations with the CWA or Communication Workers of America Group. They did have the opportunity to attend one of our utility contractor trainings. They were, after the fact, very complimentary of that training of how thorough it was and want to commend Kevin and his group for doing a good job of making sure that the contractors at work in our right-of-way are doing it safely and following along with all of our code require, or all of our city requirements. But through those conversations with CWA, we were able to improve some processes and procedures before allowing contractors to work within the right-of-way. Some of those things that we worked on or the languages that we worked on was making sure that skilled workers were required in the right-of-way and that they were complying with OSHA and ADOS requirements, and then, of course, just regular compliance with any MAG or city standards, policies, and procedures. So with that, I will turn it back over to Ellen.
Mayor, members of council, staff is requesting approval of City Code Chapter 5D Amendment for Network Infrastructure Services as presented by staff. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think we're going to hold the motion until after public comment so we make sure we have all the input possible. Do council members have any questions? All right, we will go then to public's testimony. We'll begin with Kelly, followed by Jeremiah. I always pick the people who are seated furthest away.
My name is Kelly Hinshaw. I'm with BAM Broadband. We are a local internet service provider currently building a fiber-to-home network in Scottsdale, Arizona, and we are working with the city of Phoenix currently to begin potentially building to about 12,000 homes. We are here in support of Chapter 5D. It allows us to build and compete against the current monopoly, so, you know, we hope that you guys approve this today, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you. Jeremiah is next, followed by Fernando.
I do have to identify as a lobbyist, thank you, that's what I was looking for. So my name's Jeremiah, I'm the president of CWA Local 7050 here in Phoenix. We are encouraging the city of Phoenix to commit to a strong oversight process of these fiber developments. In January of this year, the city of Las Vegas issued a notice of default to the GigaPower for violating its franchise agreement in the city. According to the notice, GigaPower's infractions caused significant and unreasonable disruption and created public safety risk. As of March 11th of this year, communication with the city, GigaPower has not been allowed to start construction in new areas until further notice. Fiber deployment is a very complex infrastructure work that requires diligent communication and coordination between all parties. Failing to diligently communicate and coordinate operations can negatively impact the public and the city infrastructure if the work is not completed properly. Based on the experience of Las Vegas and the local cities right here in our very area, residents during the GigaPower deployment, it is in the city of Phoenix's best interest to require detailed workforce plans from licensees to allow the city to review and track the records of the contractors that licensees are proposing in work of our right-of-way. I will stay available for any additional questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Fernando, followed by Andre.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. My name is Fernando Roman. I'm a member of the Communication Workers of America Local 7026. We represent about 2,200 telecommunication workers in the area. I'm here today to speak to the work the city of Phoenix has done to draft and implement the new form wherein licensees will be expected to provide a list of the prime contractors and subcontractors to the city during the pre-construction meeting to improve transparency regarding who is working in our right-of-way. As a former broadband technician with Lumen with over 25 years of experience, I know firsthand how important it is that we have properly licensed companies and highly trained, skilled technicians performing critical infrastructure work in our streets. CWA sees this as a first step to improving accountability on complex fiber deployment projects, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city on oversight of this project as it deploys. And I want to personally acknowledge Councilmember Pastor and her staff on implementation and attention to this matter, and also the Streets and Transportation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre is next, followed by Andrew. Or Andrea, maybe? Andre or Andre Torres?
He's going to.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Andre Torres. I am the Director of Operations at Zoom Technology Arizona, and it's my pleasure to be down here to support this initiative. We believe that, first, let me give you a little bit of background, Zoom Technology is new to Arizona, but not new to the fiber industry, and we believe that the transparency and communication that the city's team has brought before us, while it's been a long, we've been patient and in fully support of what is being proposed to the city council. In doing so, our roots originate from South Africa, and we believe that having another fiber operator to provide service here to the community, being a resident and native of Arizona, I can tell you that having a choice makes it much more competitive to those that have that luxury to have that service provided to them. In doing so, we have plans to obviously bring that service here to Phoenix as well as other communities here within the Phoenix area. Currently, we're building in Chandler actively, and we're in full support of the Chapter 5D. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Andrew.
My name is Andrew Novoselsky, and I'm the Chief Build Officer for Novus Fiber. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the Streets Team for the opportunity to provide Phoenix with not only fast and reliable fiber service, but also very affordable fiber service. I'm here to support the cord ordinance as well. Mr. Sanota and his team have been phenomenal to work with, they've kept us engaged and updated throughout the process, and we are here to fully comply with all aspects of the agreement, and we look forward to continuing our work here in the city of Phoenix. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment. I'll turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to give a little bit of background, and probably some people are like, why is Councilwoman Pastor involved in this, but I'm going to explain. The city of Phoenix has worked collaboratively with CWA to revise and improve its contractors' transparency disclosures to encourage better accountability for fiber deployment projects given recent publicized incidents in the region. The city has created a new utility inspection pre-construction meeting form, which includes the list of contractors and companies working on the permit form, which permitees are required to submit at a pre-construction meeting, and has updated its utility inspections, contractor process, and procedures document to reflect this new requirement. I never knew that as a councilwoman, I would be sitting here learning and talking about fiber. But in 2020, we went through a process which was called COVID, and I got actively involved in the digital divide, and in that process, I realized we didn't have fiber in Phoenix, we had limited fiber, and some of the fiber that we had, we didn't have the speed level that we needed in order for students to get, to do, get online and do the work that they had. Some fiber, some communities, contractors had a certain, a special program where you can get it for $10, but what we discovered in COVID was that you could not do your work with that special. And Cox, at the time, who I was working with, admitted that and said, we realize that now. So here I am today, talking about fiber and the necessity of really having transparency and understanding who is working on our streets and some of the incidences that have happened, and some accountability of sewer lines being broke, people working in communities or in neighborhoods where things are happening and neighbors don't know who to call or where to go. We do have a contractor, but then there's also subcontractors, so it becomes a little difficult to find out who is responsible. At the end of the day, we work with the main contractor, and the subcontractors work with that contractor, so it gets a little difficult. So all this does is just help provide some transparency and accountability if anything happens. One of the things in the motion was that I have three items that needed to go into the motion. I guess to staff, do I need to add these things into the motion?
Mayor, members of council, so Councilmember Pastor, if you would like to modify the motion?
Okay.
If it's more than a minor modification, it would be a substitute motion.
I guess I could do a substitute.
Probably.
Yeah, I'll do a substitute motion. The motion is to approve the proposed Chapter 5D City Code Amendment as presented by staff with the following additional direction: to staff to update the policy, procedures, and forms in the following manner. Number one is to add requirement for each contractor listed on the utility inspection pre-construction meeting form to provide the register of contractors and Arizona Business License number for their company. Item number two, or number two would be to add the following language to any future license agreements with fiber-to-the-home companies. A licensee will abide by the city's utility inspection A licensee will abide by the city's utility inspection contractor process and procedure requirements, including pre-construction meeting requirements, along with submission of the completed utility inspection pre-construction meeting form at the pre-construction meeting. And number three is to add the following language to any future license agreements with fiber to the home companies. The city reserves the right to revoke a license agreement or individual permits for fiber to the home projects for non-compliance with approved license requirements, construction permits, or any city code provision or policy requirements pursuant to City Code 31-80I. And then, in addition to that, on the form, I would like it to say percentage of employees that reside in Arizona and the business cell number. That is my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the councilwoman's motion and everyone who's been involved in this process. We've had months of stakeholders' meetings, and we have a better path forward as a result. So, thank you to everyone who has worked with us. We also were responding to a very important series of stories on Channel 12 from Bianca Bono that talked about some of the challenges our neighboring communities have had. We will now have a more transparent process. It will be easier to figure out who was doing the construction, and we'll have clear contact information. That was one of the items we learned from neighboring cities. When there's a problem, you have to be able to find the responsible party right of way and address it. People come to the city, and we need to have that information. We also hope that neighborhoods will get that information on door hangers. We're working hard to make sure neighbors are notified ahead of time who will be doing work in city streets and how to address any issues. We've learned that in the process of this construction, people have had issues with ruptured sewer lines or cable cut. We want to make sure that we have accountability. The councilwoman's motion gives us the chance to revoke license if we have parties who repeatedly cause issues in our right of way. The city streets belong to all of our residents, and we want to make sure that we manage them in a responsible way. The city of Phoenix's policy also makes sure we maintain our pavement in good quality. When many of us were elected, there were real challenges with potholes. In a city survey, it was one of the top issue. The Phoenix Council accelerated $200 million to invest in improving our paving and potholes. This is a responsible policy that allows us to maintain the city streets in good condition. We know that a broken windshield can really disrupt your day. It can be unsafe, and so we want to make sure that we have strong city streets. We do have a path forward for companies that have technology innovation that can help move the utility installation forward while respecting our high-quality streets. So, we tried to balance a lot of different concerns in developing this policy. The pricing structure changed and is now more responsive to what businesses said, including for companies that are installing in subdivisions and then can have a payment structure at the end when they are closer to revenue. So, we hope that we addressed a lot of the issues. Again, we'll have more transparency. We'll know who is doing construction in our city streets. There have been some challenges with out-of-state companies who were hard to contact when there was an issue, and Councilwoman Pastor's motion addresses that as well. We'll go to the Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go over the new development, and I appreciate that very much, given that I'm in the North Valley and have lots of area where there are not streets yet, giving the folks opportunity to get in there before those streets are built, because we all know that digging into them later is not fun for any of us. Eric, when you explained that part of it, you said they would be charged on per house once it was built out. I just want to clarify, because there's a difference between when the house is sold, because that's one stage, and then when it's built and they receive the ability to occupy the house. And those are two very important different, or they're two very different things, and the difference is important to me because somebody's not living in it and paying the company while it's being built. So, I'll let you answer that question first.
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor, the way that the code is currently written is that the fees will be waived until the 51% of the homes in the subdivision are sold.
And can you explain why we do sold versus until we get 51% occupants, until 51% of them have their occupancy certificate? Sorry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, in order to sell the actual home, you have to have a certificate of occupancy and have met all the construction requirements at that point. So, you would have a CVO and then be able to sell the home as a piece of real estate, meet those requirements, and then have somebody purchase that home.
So, not once it goes under contract, once it is actually, the sale is entirely completed?
Correct.
Thank you for that distinction. I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate all the work you have all done to add this piece to it. It is important that we don't go back and dig up brand-new streets. And I also appreciate the efforts made to allow for the opportunity for multiple providers to go into the same trench and working together to minimize the number of times we're cutting into our streets. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado, followed by Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I think this is very well-needed in our city. Also, I want to thank CWA for bringing in some great recommendations to making sure that we continue to keep providers accountable, that we make sure that we have the best service that we can here in the city of Phoenix. So, thank you for that. And also, I want to thank Councilwoman Pastor for leading on this, on this charge for all of us here today. And I know that our policy will be a lot better thanks to all of these changes. But thank you, staff. Thanks, everyone, for all of the hard work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions. One, I'm not necessarily, I'm not saying I'm in disagreement with the conditions, but I believe because we have spent so much time engaging with our stakeholders in this process, this has been continued a few times. I just wanted to hear from staff as whether or not you thought any of these conditions were things that would be deal breakers for our stakeholder group or things that you would want to take back to our stakeholder group for conversation.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, at this point, all the stakeholders who have expressed an interest in being here, we've tried to address their concerns. There are some other firms who are interested in the market, but because of our pavement restoration requirements and not allowing the micro trenching and in one case, concerns about the wholesale cost, at this point, they're not going to commit to coming to Phoenix. We did have discussions with them, said we're open to continuing the dialogue with them, but, you know, where this is at, there are a number of people who support it, and it's a good code amendment to move forward. Those other requirements, as we've outlined and you all have discussed, are high priorities for the council as it relates to streets, and those are big upfront costs. And that's really where the industry is faced with those upfront costs that they have to then carry over time and try and get people to sign up. And so, that's a challenge for them, and I think that's the biggest obstacle to some of them coming in.
Thank you for that, and I apologize. My question was not as carefully crafted as I thought it was. I understand there are some vendors that, because of the recommendation that you're putting forth today, they did not agree, for example, with the micro trenching, and I am okay with that. I feel like the investment that we have made as a city, we have a fiduciary obligation to respect that and to do our part to ensure that our streets continue to give our residents the best experience. I was, my question that I was trying to ask, but I didn't do so well, was more so, given the additional conditions as stated in Councilwoman Pastor's motion, did you see anything that would be an area of concern for our stakeholders that you think would need to go back? I didn't see anything from my perspective, but because I wasn't involved in the conversations, I just wanted to give that opportunity to ask this, I wanted to ask that question.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, no, we do not. We briefed them on some of the changes and issues about a week or so ago, and I don't see anything that came out of motion today that will cause any concerns. Apologize for my response.
No, that was my fault. So, thank you for that clarification. I wanted, I mean, I am personally in favor of the addition of the register of contract numbers. For those that don't know, I do insurance litigation, and I know exactly what it is to be dealing with an unauthorized, a non-registered contractor. There are benefits of having a contractor who is bonded. I was curious of whether or not there is any bonding requirements that we would be requesting of the actual prime or subcontractors that would be doing this work, just to ensure that if there's something that does go wrong, that they have adequate security.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, yes. The city requires liability insurance by the license holder for $2 million, and then contractors also hold a $2 million liability insurance policy to work in the right of way.
Do we require that similarly for the subcontractor that would be working on the project?
Yes, the subcontractors also.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Many of the items in Councilwoman Pastor's motion were items we were going to do administratively. I think at the city, we, the council votes on the big picture, and then the details often staff implements. These were items that staff was already planning to implement. We are just moving them into the council vote. Is that fair?
Mayor, that is correct.
Wonderful. I think the councilwoman thought it was important that we codify this so that there are some things that we want to be very clear about, including high standards. And so, I think this is a good choice. We know you were committed to it, but you're allowed to retire someday, and we want to make sure our commitment to our residents is codified. So, thank you. You've mentioned there might be a pilot coming forward in May. It's getting hot. Can we move that even up? I'd rather work in April than May.
Mayor, members of council, I believe the May date was chosen by Google as part of that pilot. So, we can do it in April if they're able to do it.
Okay. We want to get folks great connectivity. All right. Roll call.
Galen Delvira?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yep.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
S is 90.
Thank you. And I should give credit to Councilwoman Stark, who chaired this committee and shepherded through this a lot of complex changes. So, she very much had a major impact on this policy, and we're grateful for leading this very technical item. Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. We next go to item 64, Terminal 4 Lobby Retail Solicitation Request for Contract Award. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item 64, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will go to David for public comment.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is David Bonia. I work for SSP America as a cashier at Sky Harbor Airport. I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local 11 and a shop steward for my union. Companies seeking valuable airport contracts from our city should be expected to meet the workplace standards we fought so hard to establish. That means the city needs to hold companies accountable for the standards already in their contracts with airport companies, like the protections against extreme heat and racial discrimination. Many of my coworkers were disappointed with the city's response to workers' complaints about alleged racial disparities in SSP workplaces in 2023. And with summer approaching, we're worried whether companies will actually follow the heat safety rules the council passed last year. The city plans to continue handing out contracts like this. It's important that it holds contractors to account to maintain good jobs and working conditions for all airport workers. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next go to Lucia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lucia Salinas. I work for HMM's Host as a cook at Cabo Shaw at Phoenix Sky Harbor. I am also a proud member of Unite Here Local 11, which has done a lot to raise the wages and working condition at the airport. All workers at the airport should be able to earn a dignified living. Before our more recent contract, I had spent nearly $400 a month of medication. Now, I pay just $40 a month under a new healthcare contract. But it's been a long struggle for me and my coworkers to get here. For that reason, it's especially important that the city do its part ensure that airports have responsible employers. If the city is going to give a volume contract like this, we will also be expecting the city to make sure all airports company pay decent wages so workers can afford housing and healthcare. Already, the city of Phoenix has committed to putting contrast protection against racial discrimination and extreme heat. Phoenix needs to do more to raise the standards and ensure that airport companies are held their existing commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice job. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions on the contract. Thank you, Chad.
We will introduce our Aviation Director, Chad Makovsky.
Thank you so much. Airport real estate, because of its prime location and limited availability, is expensive. Because of that, locations for vendors at Sky Harbor Airport, like other large and busy airports, are incredibly valuable due to their prime position and limited availability. It's truly all about location for restaurants or vendors looking to secure a spot within our terminals. The competition should be fierce, often requiring them to work hard and really negotiate with the city to outbid one another and agree to significant lease agreements. I guess my question is, was the competition fierce on this lease agreement?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, thank you for the question. In this particular location, this is a single-unit location. It's about 1,700 square feet, and it is located pre-security, before you go through security at Sky Harbor Airport in Terminal 4 and Level 3. As a result, it is a lower traffic area, or there's lower demand for that facility than in other comparable facilities that would be after the security checkpoint. In this particular solicitation, we actually received two proposals, and we evaluated those proposals. And the winning proposal is with Parity's Legard Air, which is before you here today.
And is that normal for us to get, just to being the fifth-largest city and one of the biggest airports, is that normal for us to get one or two bidders for this type of contract?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, it varies on the packages and how many locations we're bidding out on each package and where those packages are located at the airport. So, in this area, pre-security, my experience has been that because it is a lower-demand location, that this, I was not expecting more than two to three proposals for this particular proposal.
Okay. And then my other, so goal versus comments, given the premium nature of these opportunities, it's crucial that we leverage our position as a city to ensure we achieve the best possible contracts for both our city and airport workers. The length of these contracts play a vital role in that leverage. And I believe we should be strategic in how we approach that aspect. And my question is, how were we strategic in getting the best deal for the city and our workers?
Mayor, Councilmember Guardado, I have Chief Revenue Officer, Roxanne Favors, is with me. She is far more well-versed in this particular proposal than I am, so I'm going to defer to her, if I may.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, Representative Councilwoman Gallego Guardado. I'm sorry. I'm just a little nervous today. You're okay?
I'm normally am not. This particular solicitation, we did through our public process. So, when we put that out, a couple of things that we do look at in which to make sure that all the units are very representative of not only our local community, but our local culture. So, we do have design standards. So, we do require, our minimum was $350 per square foot in design. We've seen in the industry, post-security locations, them spending up to anywhere between $800 and $900 per square foot. In this particular location, they are going to spend around $576 per square foot.
In this particular location, they are gonna spend around $576 per square foot to bring the design standards that's up. What we also require, and I appreciate all of the public comment, all of the requirements that this council made forward when it came to extreme heat, those requirements are in the contract. All of the requirements that have been echoed in similar concession agreements regarding employment, their training, showing us all of those standards are also echoed in this particular contract that is here before. And so, we continue to learn those lessons that the mayor and council have ensured that we want to be able to be a quality airport, quality employer that are carried forward in this particular contract. In this award that's in front of you today, this particular company, while we are race and gender neutral, has committed 30% to our small businesses, and all three of their small businesses are local Phoenix small businesses that participate with them. And they've been really great partners in other portions of our initiatives at the airport, and this one voluntarily being part of our sustainability green business program. So, carrying forward all of those items that are very important to the airport.
Thank you so much. You did amazing. Thank you. And I guess another question for you, Chad, why a 10-year agreement?
And thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Guardado. What we do before we put out a solicitation is we actually work, we have a concessions consultant that works with the airport, that pays very close attention to what's going on in the industry, also looking at the costs of construction, the types of concepts that are going into airports around the country. And as a result of our consultation with them, as well as looking at what our peer airports are doing, we quickly realized that food and beverage contracts, which were typically at the 10-year term length, are now actually going to closer to 15 years. And as we looked at our peer airports at the time, almost all of them, to my recollection, were at least a 10-year term for retail. And that's for two reasons. One is, we want to make sure we try to draw in competition, and because this was a low demand area of the airport, we wanted to set a term that we thought would actually draw competition for the proposal. And then the second reason is that over the term, they do an initial capital investment that Ms. Favors had mentioned, and then over the course of the term, they actually make additional investments in that facility. We want to make sure that the business has the opportunity to properly amortize that investment over the term length.
So then, what you're saying then is that we're gonna be, moving forward, we're gonna see more 10-year contracts coming to us instead of five?
Mayor, Councilmember Guardado, I wouldn't want to say today that that's definitely gonna be the case. What we do is, as we move forward each time, we look at what the, kind of the condition is, the location of the concept, we look at what's going on in the industry, we look at cost of construction, and then that informs our position. With every one of these concessions proposals, we do bring those to the council as before we actually issue the revenue contract solicitation, because we want to make sure that the council's comfortable as well with those term lengths.
Right. I mean, Roxana, as much as I loved your presentation, and I think you did a good job explaining, I guess I just still don't understand the expense of, you know, of what's the major expense that they're gonna be spending on, given that it's not a big kitchen, it's not a restaurant? Like, what is that huge expense, and what is it that's gonna cost so much money?
No, thank you. I appreciate that. So, for this particular location, they will, the current unit will close, they'll completely gut that unit, and they'll bring in all-new build outfits for that. Keep it in mind, at the airport, for every concession, while we may bring utilities to the lease line, they then have to pull those utilities throughout their particular store unit that is there. We also have requirements on energy efficiency, so all of the units, like you're saying, it's a complete gut and rebuild of the store on that costing estimate that's there. Additionally, any of the coolers that they bring in, new technology, we do ask them to bring in new technology for speed of service. They may also be bringing in TV monitors that are not currently used in the unit to be able to let the traveling public know what's available, what's for sale. So, those are all those cost estimates that is coming to that total for that. They have a very unique design to reflect that there are a local store unit that's there, so those are all the design costs that go into that particular unit. And for retailers, like you had mentioned, there's not large kitchen equipment that needs to be there, so they do need that period of time to amortize for those assets that they will be bringing in, and to be able to finance that.
Okay. Well, I would just ask that we, as we look at these contracts, that we take, you know, a harder look on these, because this is just a convenience store, it's not something bigger than that. And as much, I will support the item today, I just was very curious on why a 10-year contract, and why we thought these expenses were gonna be bigger than what we normally do. And then, on the heat ordinance as well, I think that, you know, we're having a few hiccups with some of the other companies that I've been hearing about. So, I would recommend that we make sure that we have some sort of line of communication between those workers and the city, because it sounds like they're not, they have not been able to file complaints at other parts of the airport. So, I would recommend that in this contract, we make sure that we spell that out more clearly, on how it said that workers can file a complaint, especially where we're seeing that this summer is probably gonna be even hotter than last year, and making sure that workers do have that opportunity to be able to file a complaint. But thank you guys so much for answering all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Galen Delvira?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next go to item 67, Small Business Enterprise Program, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the title.
Item 67 is for ordinance G7370, and ordinance amending section 18-205A of chapter 18, article 7 of the Phoenix City Code relating to the Small Business Enterprise Procurement Program to extend the Small Business Enterprise Program.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 67.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? This is an exciting one. Small business is big business in the city of Phoenix. We are a real leader in small business investment. We have a nationally recognized program that helps make sure local dollars support our local small businesses and put our local contractors to work. Over the last five years, we have, since the last time this program was extended, over $555 million construction dollars that went to small business contractors. Since the last extension, nearly 3,300 construction contracts went to small business contractors, and we have certified more than 300 new firms. Thank you to the small businesses who are building Phoenix. Roll call.
Galen Delvira?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next go to item 69, Rio Reimagine, Third Street, Rio Solado Bridge. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 69.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any comments? We do have members of the public to testify. We'll begin with a great multimodal leader, Suzanne Day. And then we'll go to poor Gina Thomas, who I tried to get to testify earlier on Wallace and Ladmo, but who really wanted to talk about the bridge.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for all of your work, all that you do all the time. This is not easy. I didn't actually intend to speak. I thought I marked only to speak if needed, but I do support bicycle access to that bridge over the Rio Solado at Third Street. Yes, please. Yes, please, we need it. Thanks.
Great testimony, and you did, you accurately were not gonna give me an A for today's meeting. All right. I'm just so focused on the councilwoman's birthday, I don't know. Gina Thomas is next, followed by Nicole Sanderson.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for letting me speak on this, and I appreciate, I was trying to get some comments ready for Wallace and Ladmo earlier, and I guess I wanted to just maybe make the kid-related connection to that. So, yeah, my name is Gina Thomas, I'm a resident of Phoenix, I live around Camelback and Central. I have two young boys, we love biking all over the city, and I just wanted to say I fully support this Rio Solado project and the bridge project. I love that there's a bike pad bridge that's happening, and with that $25 million investment, I just want to, please, 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 finish the connection through downtown, so that my kids and I can ride from where I live downtown over the bridge and keep that connectivity, because without the connection to downtown, we can't access that bridge via our bikes. And again, just kind of making the Wallace and Ladmo connection, I appreciate everything that the City Council and the mayor has done to make it safer for my children to bike, to bike with me, to bike on their own. It's a very difficult thing to do as a parent, it's a scary thing to do. I want them to know how to get around their community safely, to feel that independence of being able to get places on their own. There's a lot of parental pressure to have to drive your kids absolutely everywhere, and anything that we can do to add connectivity for non-car ways for our children to get around and support that independence, I just really, really, really support that, and I hope that you'll consider making that connection to make this bridge even more impactful. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really nicely done. Nicole.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Uh, great, I would love to back up the next speaker. I'm super excited about the Rio Solado pedestrian and bike bridge project. It's an amazing project. I was very fortunate to see the full presentation on it by one of the city's engineers last month at the warehouse district council meeting. It's very impressive. And I noticed that the presentation also mentioned that in the area of the project, one out of every five households doesn't own a car. I live downtown, and I think there's a growing number of residents downtown who also are foregoing car ownership. I know mine's about to be too old, and I don't want to have to replace it, so I think I urge the city to connect the bridge up to downtown. I think Third Street is a great choice. From the city's published data, it looks like it wouldn't interrupt any of the vehicles users who currently use Third Street to add some bike infrastructure there. It would probably boost retail sales along Third Street, like in Arizona Central, we would all benefit from that, and the TPT revenue. And this would really go a long way, I think, to help the bottom 15% of wage earners to access more jobs, access, you know, the entire corridor of Third Street and all the other connected bike facilities, get your jobs around the city. So, I want to encourage the city to build onto this great project. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That concludes testimony. Any comments? Roll call.
Galen Delvira?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you all. That concludes our agendized business. I'll turn to our city attorney to introduce the final portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you so much. We'll begin with Bill Sheal, followed by Coco Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Sheal, 301 West Lindwood Street, and like the couple of previous speakers, I really want to thank you for your investment in bicycle infrastructure, and the Third Street Bridge over Rio Solado really exemplifies that, and so I'm gonna echo those comments. I'm a frequent user of the recently expanded Third Avenue and Third Street bike lanes, separated bike lanes, and they do a great job of connecting downtown with midtown and uptown, and really excited to see that connectivity be extended to South Phoenix. So, here's the but, I'm surprised and disappointed that the county apparently has dropped the ball on this year's Bike to Work event, and I'm hoping there might be a way to get that back on the calendar with city leadership. Several of you have participated in this event in the past, and in my mind, I thought it always was a city event. I didn't realize the county had anything to do with it. This would be a great way to show off our new bike lanes. The event usually happens in mid-April, so time's running short. Nationally, the event is scheduled for mid-May, so perhaps there's a way to piggyback on that. I'm sure there are bicycle advocacy groups that would love to help make the event a success. I appreciate your time and hope we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Coco is next, followed by Missy.
My name is Coco Garcia. I'm the founder of a small rescue called Handover Rover here in Phoenix, Arizona. My team and I have been coming to these meetings for several months now, and we've been coming in an effort to bring some of the horrific animal abuse cases that come onto our plate to your attention, but we've been doing that simply because we need your help. And every time I show up, every single time without fail, you guys help us in some way or fashion. You've been able to help us, and you've even gone as far as to meet with us outside of this building. And today, I'm here to ask for your help again. Last week, Senate Bill 1234 had some opposition, and it did not pass. This bill amends language currently to make it easier for our law enforcement to do their job and for prosecutors to do their job. For example, currently in Arizona, it's legal for our companion pets to live tied up to a tree in 115-degree weather with less than an inch of water in a water dish. And that water can be green, it can be putrid, it can have maggots in it, mosquitoes, and I'm saying this because I've dealt with that and I've encountered that, and that is legal. A tree is defined as shelter. The owner can say, "I fed that animal earlier," and the water dish, it doesn't matter if there's even water in it, it could be a lid. As long as something's there, that is legal for the animal to live like that. Last summer, I received a request for a dog that was living outside with no food or water, and it was very, very common, this thing happens all the time. When I arrived, the dog was severely dehydrated, malnourished, and suffering heat exhaustion. I politely got the owner's attention, and when I asked him about water, he pointed to his roof and pointed at the condensation runoff from the AC unit, and underneath of it was just a little lid that was down there, and he said, "That's condensation runoff, and that's his water, and that's fine." I knew that law enforcement couldn't do anything, so I didn't even bother trying to get anybody involved at that time. I just handed the guy $100, and I said, "I'd love to have this dog," and that was that. I live with 25 dogs in a five-bedroom house on a ranch, and I'm very fortunate that I have property to be able to heal these dogs and treat these dogs. I've been up since 4:00 AM, and that's 24/7. That's just how I live, because I want to help them. So, although Bill 1234 didn't make it, it was rebranded to Bill 1658. This bill asks for the bare minimum, does not ask for much else. It asks for potable drinking water. It asks that shelter not be a tree, and it be an actual shelter. It asks for the owner not to throw a box of Cheerios out there and not be the food. It's the bare minimum. So, today, I'm here today to ask for your support in that bill. I would like to know if I could get an endorsement from all of the council members in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Missy is next, followed by John Forsythe.
I'm just gonna read this, because I'll mess up if I don't. "Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is a well-known phrase from the United States' Declaration of Independence. Every day, every day, there's so many posts on social media that myself and other animal rescuers see of kittens being abused, cats being abandoned, their caretakers are tired, sick, broke, depressed. At the end of their lives, they can say they saved this many amount of cats, but at what cost to their happiness? All the while, the cat crisis is still a crisis because it was never a priority. There are many things in life that are beyond our control, the weather, time, natural disasters, other people's opinions. The cat crisis is something we can control. We can help the suffering of cats." We can help the suffering of cats and their guardians who are not happy. They are sad, they're overwhelmed, and they feel alone. For many reasons, we need to start opening up the conversation and working together. I live in Garfield District, District 8, Garfield neighborhood. And I've lived there about three years. When I moved in, my house came with 18 community cats in my backyard. It's a pretty big backyard. They're lucky. They get misters in the summer, they get heated beds in the winter, they even get catnip and toys, and they get fed three times a day. That's from a cat lady. Not all cats get that. Hardly no cats get that. They're suffering, they're dying. It's not a good life. My neighbor that lives next to me has lived there for quite some time. Every single day, she puts a pile of poop next to my car in my driveway because she hates the cats. She hates my cats. They're not my cats, they came with the house, I tell her. She still does it. This hate is so much with so many other people in our community. So if the city can jump on this, then you guys can be a steward to this and make it so where everybody else can kind of follow that lead. Taking action on this issue is only going to improve Phoenix's reputation as a compassionate and progressive place, attracting residents and visitors alike. We hope that SB 1658 will also help this initiative. It's time to be a part of the solution because remaining silent and indifferent is the greatest sin of all. I've been coming to this now 16 times. And Councilman Robertson, I appreciate that you are willing to meet with me. Somebody contacted me today. I came today to say, I don't even want to come anymore because I feel like ignored. I feel, all a community member wants to do is be heard and be listened to. And I cannot believe, I cannot believe 16 times I've came here, I've been on a list since November to meet with the mayor. I just, I don't understand why. This is an important issue. And I hope that other people aren't ignored for their issues. Thank you.
John is next, followed by Jerry.
Good afternoon, elected representatives of the people. That is how the Constitution refers to you as. I am John Forsythe. I told you last time I was here, I was going to be back today to talk about the erosion of civil rights here in the city of Phoenix. Last time I visited recently, the Mesa City Council, which is the third-largest city here in Arizona, there was five police officers in the chamber. Now, I'm concerned because one of America's greatest traditions is a citizen's right to bring arguments against their government. I believe the large police presence in this chamber is affecting Americans' rights, Phoenicians, to be able to come here and speak openly and honest. Now, Thomas Jefferson, he's a pretty famous guy. He's on our nickel, $2 bill, he was our third president. He wrote the Declaration of Independence, 80% of our Constitution. He was the smartest person in the room. He warned us years ago that democracies not only can be ugly, they should be ugly. It has to be uncomfortable. We have to talk through our issues. We're not doing that here in the city of Phoenix. Fear is growing inside of the city of Phoenix. Fear is a violation of people's civil rights. It deprives them of liberty and the pursuit of happiness. I have a daughter, she's 22 years old. She's an ex-D1 NCAA softball player, centerfield. She confided in me recently that she fears walking across a parking lot, walking to her car. First thing she does, and I guess this is very common amongst women, she gets in her car and she locks the door. Pisses me off to no extent that in this country, we have citizens that are fearful, especially fearful from our government. Now, I had intentions to come here today, talk about Michael Kenyon. This is horrific. 1949 Accords of the Treatment of Enemy Combatants, the Geneva Conventions. Those officers violated what our military expects out of our soldiers. Our military has higher standards than the city of Phoenix. That's amazing. I tried to go home last night after a rough day and just look at some feel-good news. But the first news story that came up my feed was city of Phoenix again, Mr. McAlpin. If you don't know who he is, he's an innocent black man who's deaf. He has cerebral palsy. He was tackled and attacked by two police officers. The inhumanity of what is going on here astonishes me. These are no longer isolated incidents. We have to talk about these things. These incidents aren't happening in other cities, they're happening here in the city of Phoenix. I'm amazed, I said it last time, I'm the only one outraged. There should be more outrage. I have made a decision, we're going to talk about it, we're going to address our issues. I'm going to come here and tell the city of Phoenix, I'm a native Phoenician, we fix our problems. Thank you.
Jerry is next, followed by Emily.
Thank you, Council. I have a handout I'd like to hand to each council member. Thank you, council members. Once again, I'm addressing the fiasco that's gone on for nine years now down at South Mountain with a renovation that was supposed to be to honor the park and celebrate its centennial, which was last year. We're still working on it. Last year at this time, in April, deputy city manager gave me a listing of all the projects that were being completed and in progress down at South Mountain since its inception in 2016. If you look at that chart, you'll see that there were only two projects left to be completed. One month later, another $13 million were added to the project for three items that were never even on the list. One was only, has only showed up one time. It's a, it says land purchase. It's a house. $7 million of 3PI money. This is all 3PI money. One month from where we were assured, here's where we're at. We've got two projects we'll have to do. Then, all of a sudden, the visitor's center is being remodeled, two years after it was dedicated for another remodel. And then another activity complex, which had stood empty and unused, no construction going on for eight months, all of a sudden needed. This is a contract at risk, which means you can't just get more money. But you voted $5.5 million on July 1st last year to the weak excuse that it needed to be completed. This is all 3PI money. So you're basically relying to the public. And they're really tired of it because we've got 3PI money, the course of its lifetime is over $1 billion. And it's basically a billion-dollar bait and switch. Thank you.
Emily is next, followed by Tim.
My name is Emily Stirrup and I'm from Tempe, Arizona. I'd like to start by saying when I was eight years old, I was on the Wallace and Ladmo Show and I did receive a ladmo bag. Anyway, I was a little flustered by all that, so bear with me. I was just released from the hospital a few days ago. I have Crohn's disease. And over the past 32 years, I've had 12 surgeries, hundreds of hospitalizations, and now I have a permanent ileostomy. Truly, I'd rather be at home, watching old reruns of Charlie's Angels while disassociating for the next three years and nine months. But I can't. I lead with my heart, and that is why I'm here today. There are so many things wrong with our healthcare system, but that's not what I'm here to discuss. There's a bigger problem in the healthcare. This country is having a lack of empathy crisis. It's affecting every system in our country and it seems an impossible task to try and solve. But I do have some suggestions. We need to start focusing on changing legislation for animals. It has been shown throughout history that if you can get the public to care about animals, they naturally will start to care for other human beings. I am on the board at Handover Rover, an animal rescue founded by Coco Garcia. I have been involved in her rescue since 2020 and I've watched her move mountains. She is the hardest-working person I have ever known, and her dedication to improving the lives of animals is unmatched. Coco has the drive, passion, and intelligence to lead this fight. We are looking to change laws, retrain the police in assessing abuse, and educating the general public. We need those in office to help make these changes. There is so much unnecessary suffering and we are here to help, but we need your guidance and your support. We will be following up with emails, phone calls, and in-person meetings. This is our time. I feel so compelled to do everything I can to make the world a kinder place for the younger generations. I myself do not have children, but I am part of the village. I want my younger rescuers to know we are fighting for them as well as the animals. I look forward to working with you all and making Arizona a blueprint for other states to follow. Thank you for your consideration.
Tim is next, followed by Christina.
Good afternoon, Tim Surakowski. Before I start talking about what Jerry was talking about, I want to thank this group of individuals for all their dedication and all the time that they have spent dealing with animals that really need our help. They really, really, really need our help. I love animals and I love my dog more than I like most people. Sad but true. And I sleep with my dog, so I understand their concern. And I think we should have more people become more involved with this project in helping take care of our animals that are running wild in the streets. So I really wanted to thank these individuals for coming here. They've been doing it a long time. And there's not enough that I could say about all their great stuff that they're doing. And getting up at four, I understand that every day. My dog gets me up every day at four. We have requested a number of times 3PI to see exactly where the 3PI money is at. This year supposedly you spent almost $89 million of 3PI money. We'd like to know where it has gone. Where'd all this money go? What have you spent the money on? We have a forensic accountant at the present time looking at the federal budget, and we have record requests in at the present time so that we can see exactly everything that's being spent. But it seems to be at this point that no one can give us a great financial disclosure of any of this. We keep asking for it, but no one wants to really do it. So what we're going to do, if we have to, we're going to do some subpoenas. We're going to ask for all the checks at the present time of these, quote, "two accounts" that you say are in separate accounts. And we're going to look at all the check numbers and stuff, and we're going to make sure this money is being spent correctly. Not that I would ever question anything that, you know, the money's being spent for. Even in the inside of the city of Phoenix, it's called a slush fund. And we all know probably it's been used as a slush fund because, you know, the money was there, and if it's there, they'll use it. I think that if we look at the $23 million makeover of South Mountain and you start looking at really what was spent there, and now I'm looking at stuff that they're saying they spent $49 million there, what'd they spend $49 million on? So these are all questions that we keep asking every month. And I know you guys must be getting bored with listening to us come every month and talk about this, but there is one way we can resolve this. Put the money in two accounts, put it online, and let's see exactly where this money is being spent. Let's see beginning balances and let's see ending balances. And that will make the people really proud of our government officials because they'll say, "Thank you."
Christina is next, followed by David.
Hello, my name is Christina Tyler. The reason why I came to speak today is actually on three different issues. So the first issue comes from the previous board meeting that I attend earlier today at Maricopa County Board of Supervisors meeting. And it sounds like what they concluded when it comes to one of the components of the ADA issues because they refused to have a webinar, it sounds like the Fifth Avenue and Jefferson Parking Lot would require joint cooperation to be able to allow a little shuttle van or a little golf cart to transport people with disabilities to go to and from their board meetings. So I'd hope that the city of Phoenix responds to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors in a timely manner on that issue so that way individuals can be reasonably accommodated as necessary. The other issue that I wanted to discuss today has to do with Burton Bar Public Library. What is happening that I found out a few days ago is that the bookstore has been closed for the last year because of, due to a lack of volunteers to be willing to volunteer for it. And what I have been finding is by trying to figure out information of what it would require and also contacting the source that is listed, is that the source that you guys have to respond for calls and emails is not responsive. So I'd like to ask for the city of Phoenix to let me know what it would require of an individual and how many people that you would need in order to get the bookstore back up and running. I believe that this is a necessary resource for the city of Phoenix, and I believe that the city of Phoenix City Council needs to provide answers, resources, and guidance towards what we need to do as a community to help support our Burton Bar Library to have a bookstore, which provides food and drinks in a convenient manner as well as low-cost books for the individuals within Maricopa County and city of Phoenix. And the last issue that I'd like to speak on is to do with House Bill 2431. I would like the city of Phoenix to change their policy in compliance with state statutes to where if a police officer is going to detain an individual, that if their head hits the ground, that it is emergency transportation, commuting the individual. So that way, they have their rights to emergency transport in compliance with House Bill 2431. Thank you.
Thank you. David is next, and then our final speaker will be Dan Barker.
Mayor and Council, my name is David Everly. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Phoenix until recently. Phoenix and Arizona was my home. Arizona is still my home. I know this is just comments, so I thought I'd provide a little perspective of my last month in the city of Phoenix. On February 27th, 2025, two uniformed officers accompanied by the city of Phoenix Planning and Development Officer came to my residence and asked me what I was doing. When I was telling him that I was repairing a pipe, he told me I needed a permit. When I told him I didn't need a permit, the plumber said I didn't need a permit, he says, "Oh, I'm turning you over to non-enforcement." And I said, "Okay, well, I'll talk to my legal team and if I need a permit, I'll apply." And he said, "Okay." And then he mentioned, and then he pointed to the police officers who were accompanying him. Police officers that were accompanying a city of Phoenix planning inspector on an unofficial visit. How do I know it's unofficial? Because I went down to the city of Phoenix that day. I talked to Neighborhood Services, I talked to Planning and Development, and they had zero complaints, zero complaints in their system about my house. I said, "Is it usual for the city of Phoenix Police Department and the Planning and Development Inspection to come to a house?" And they said, "No." Every single one of them. I talked to the Assistant Director of Planning and Development. He said, "No," until he talked to his guy. And then he tried to, it was over. I filed with the OAT that the city council created. I filed with Mr. Robinson's team there. They contacted me back, even though the city of Phoenix Police Department had no incidences, no incidences I recorded at all. Professional Standards Bureau canceled my thing. I talked to OAT, they agreed to mediate. They agreed to mediate. And then, lo and behold, lo and behold, four weeks later, four weeks later... later, the Professional Standards Bureau for the Police Department calls me, and they say, "There was an alarm that two police officers were responding to at 4041 East Fairmount, two houses down, and that is why they are there." I have recorded all of this. I have recorded every discussion with the city of Phoenix, every discussion with the city of Phoenix. I have lodged complaints with the Professional Standards Bureau. I have lodged complaints with OAT, and they can do nothing. I can't even complain, I can't even complain about the Development Department because the... Thank you very much, I appreciate your service.
Diane will be our final speaker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm in District 7, and yes, I will wave to you, and I've been in support of many of your initiatives completely, the heat relief in District 7, my representative Carlos Galindo Rivera, even though I've had some opposition in the neighborhood on it, but I think they've come around too, and we're moving forward to a more satisfying, but we'll miss you. And we want the city to keep on, you know, taking care of people that are less unfortunate, and they need help, and we need help. Okay, so I've been listening today, I almost wasn't going to come over here. Normally, I go to Wednesday over to the board, which I did to MAG. I've stopped going there because guess what? All their policies and studies has only got us and Phoenix the worst air quality in the country. So also, I'd like to add, I hope the Streets Department, Nanger, looks into, I just saw on MAG last night, that your efforts on repaving, a lot of them are for alleys. Now, I could be for some of that, but when you, when I'm on particularly buses, they're rattling on major streets like Thomas, you need to pave those streets, so I'd like to see where in priority on MAG, we're doing dustproofing and paving, if in fact, you move those to the more used streets, Mayor, okay? And so finally, I'd like to say, the federal government's the biggest employer in the United States, bigger than Wal-mart's, 2.7 million. We have a lot of people, and the lady spoke about, there isn't empathy in this country. This was a bipartisan, I got into my files, I've been going to a lot of meetings because I do care to participate with government. Can you believe people are all upset with this group called Dodge? It's efficiency to cut down on this. Mind you, the biggest employer in the United States is federal government. The thing is, this Dodge, by another name, started in 2018, or maybe before. There is a group, they're still around, and they were looking at the inefficiencies waste, and they're, they, this is bipartisan, it's called Open the Books, and they wrote a letter then, in 2018, to President Trump to join in in looking into all of the waste and to make a transparency and to have it bipartisan. So people in this country, regardless of party, need to look at, I could name off these, it's my time's up, but look into openbooks.com. Talking.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
And town of Apache Junction Mayor Chip Wilson. Let's give them all a round of applause.